Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you can hear me all right. Thank you, Council President Bass, and it's a pleasure to meet you to the new council members, Councilmember Jenkins and Councilmember Ramachandran. So, as Betsy said, I'm Alexa Jeffress. I'm the Director of Economic and Workforce Development for the city. Can we go to the next slide, please, Latonya? Great, and I think we can go to the next slide after that. Great, thank you. So, yeah, I'm good today. I'm going to first walk you through just an overview of the department and our responsibilities, and I'll also share some details not presented in this PowerPoint presentation, but that are available in the departmental briefings that were part of the Agenda Packet Notice for today's meeting. So Economic and Workforce Development is a small and one of the sort of mid-sized smaller departments. I think by City of Oakland Department Standards, we have about 62 staff, but the breadth of our work is fairly broad. So those 62 staff are organized into six divisions that cover a broad range of activities and projects and programs all related to economic development and vitality. So before I go into those, I'll share that the mission statement of the department is to ensure that all communities in Oakland are healthy, stable, and thriving by creating economic opportunity for all Oaklanders and equitable conditions to build intergenerational wealth. So we're really focused not on sustainability and equity in addition to growth and opportunity. So as I mentioned, there are six divisions in Economic and Workforce Development. We'll share in a high level what each division does, and then we'll discuss some of their programs and activities later on in the presentation. So the first department is Business Development. This is typically what we think about as traditional economic development. So this is the team that works to sort of sustain, attract, grow businesses in Oakland. So this encompasses both small business support, running programs to support Oakland's small businesses and retain our incredible vibrant business community, excuse me, and also looking at sort of larger economic sort of attraction and growth opportunities around how do we ensure that Oakland is a really desirable place for investment and also for new businesses that can create high-quality jobs to come and bring their economic activities and revenue growth to Oakland. We also include the Workforce Development Team, and that team is a small team, about six employees. It's Staff C Oakland Workforce Development Board, which you'll see referred to as OWDB. And the Workforce Development Team oversees all workforce investments in Oakland, primarily through investments of federal funding through the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, which you'll hear referred to as WIOA, and we'll talk more about later. And as Betsy mentioned, we do have Sophia Navarro, who's the Executive Director of our Workforce Development Board here today, in case there are questions about our workforce development activities. The third division is Cultural Affairs. So Cultural Affairs manages all of the city's cultural arts programming, which includes both cultural grant-making and a number of activities in a number of categories. This division puts out cultural grants to support artists and arts organizations in Oakland. And this team also manages public art. So this is a combination of working on public art installations in sort of city infrastructure projects and also working with private developers who are meeting the city's public art obligations. Next slide. So in addition to sort of these traditional economic development and cultural activities areas, we also include the Public-Private Development and Real Estate Asset Management Teams. So the Public-Private Development Team is actually what the former Redevelopment Agency became, so the Redevelopment Successor Agency, which you'll see referred to as the Oakland Redevelopment Successor Agency, or ORSA, is sort of the legacy of the former redevelopment in Oakland. So this team is all project managers and real estate development experts who negotiate and implement all real estate developments on city-owned land. And in the discussion later with my colleague Director Gilchrist and Planning and Building, we'll go into more detail about land use and give you some examples of the different types of developments that are happening on public land that are being led by this team. The Real Estate Asset Management Team, led by Real Estate Manager Brendan Moriarty, who many of you know, handles all real estate transactions in the city. So this is a team of real estate agents, and they cover all the leasing, asset management, appraisal, acquisition, disposition of all city-owned properties. So they have, you know, they cover a really broad range of activities. They serve different departments within the city, whether it's leasing or disposing of city-owned assets, but also leasing private assets or land or real estate assets from other public agencies for city uses. And then finally, our sixth division, which was a recent addition to Economic and Workforce Development since 2021, is the Special Activity Permits Division. This is led by Greg Minor, who used to be in the City Administrator's Office. And this team is really focused on promoting equitable ownership and opportunities within the cannabis industry. So Special Activities Permits Division regulates a broad range of activities in addition to cannabis. They also issue permits for special events and film production and other activities that we'll get into more detail about later. Next slide. So I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview just about sort of the economic status of Oakland, sort of what's happening in Oakland's economy. But before we get into that, just a little bit more detail about the department. So I mentioned, you know, we're kind of a mid-sized department, about 62 staff. Our fiscal year 2022 to '23 adopted budget was about $34 million. About 50% of our funds come from the general fund. So we are, you know, fairly reliant on general fund for our operations and our staffing and activities. The balance of the department's budget comes from a few different places. There's redevelopment bond funding, which funds sort of the project work, project administration work and development work that Public-Private Development does. That is a diminishing resource as part of the obligation as we unwind the redevelopment activities after the dissolution of redevelopment about a decade ago, is to eventually close out that bond funding. There's also the workforce funding, federal workforce funding through WIOA, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, which I mentioned before. That's about $4 million a year for our budget. And then there's significant grant funding that's brought in through activities around, you know, there's cannabis grant funding that comes in from the state. We get some economic development grants from the federal government. And then the department also is partially funded through Measure C, TOT, Transit Occupancy Tax, funds some activities in the Cultural Affairs Division. So that's the budget, kind of an overview of the department. Now going into the sort of economic situation in Oakland currently, we talked a lot over the last few years about the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on the local and the national economy. And you can see from this chart that the unemployment peaked in 2020. That was around April 2020, very early in the COVID-19 shutdowns. We saw unemployment peak at just above 12%. It actually peaked closer to 15%, but the average for the year in 2020 was 12%. Unemployment is actually pretty good right now. It's gone down to 3.4%. So this is very, very close to what unemployment was looking like before the COVID-19 pandemic in the 2018-2019 period. However, when we look at this through an equity lens, we know that there's data behind the data and that this data doesn't tell the whole picture, which is we know that low-wage industries, retail, restaurant, and hospitality have been recovering more slowly, that both wage and employment rates have been recovering more slowly in those industries. And we know that racial and geographic disparities in employment persist. So we know that in zip codes that correspond to a higher number of lower-wage workers and BIPOC residents in Oakland, we know that unemployment rates, that unemployment rates are much higher in those zip codes and districts. Next slide. So now I'm just going to walk you through sort of just some key indicators of the economy in Oakland. So the first is looking at our office vacancy rate. So this chart tells a pretty clear picture. You know, we were having some pretty solid occupancy in downtown Oakland and throughout Oakland prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. Since the COVID-19 pandemic and the shift to work from home for a lot of white-collar workers, we've seen rapidly increasing vacancy in our office market. There was some optimism, I think, as things were starting to reopen in 2021. We saw a slight downtick, but you know, at the end of 2023, you can see that office vacancy, especially in downtown Oakland, has been trending back up to where it's significantly higher than it was prior to the COVID-19 pandemic and economic shutdowns. And I can say this is very typical for other downtown areas, both within the region. San Francisco is a good indicator of another area that's seen this type of extreme increase in downtown office vacancy, but also in other cities around the country. Next slide. So it shows retail vacancy. It's a similar story, not quite as significant. You know, prior to the pandemic, we had really solid retail growth, especially in the downtown area. We were seeing a lot of new shops and businesses popping up. It went up pretty significantly in 2020 and 2021 with retail vacancy, especially downtown, getting, you know, going up to almost 7.5%. We've seen improvement since then. I think there's been more occupancy in retail storefronts, both downtown and throughout the city. There's an interesting trend and some data available that we're looking at about sort of increase in retail activity outside of downtown corridors and areas as the focus of how people shop and work has shifted more into the neighborhoods. Next slide. And the last slide is a bright spot, industrial vacancy. So one of Oakland's core economic strengths is our industrial land. We have significant assets in industrial land throughout the city, particularly in East and West Oakland. And we can see that this has been sort of a trendy, a strong trend during the pandemic, that even though kind of is a counterbalance to the high vacancy rates in commercial and higher vacancy rates in retail, we've actually seen pretty strong occupancy in industrial and a strong interest in industrial land in both the East Bay and in Oakland. So that's going to be a core focus as we work with our colleagues in planning and building and with any EWD on looking at our economic development strategy over the next few years. And so how do we ensure that we're leveraging Oakland's significant industrial assets to ensure that we're generating revenue for the city and creating good jobs for Oakland residents? Next slide. And then while we're on a bright spot, just wanted to add in a slide about hotel development. So a significant source of revenue for the city, and as I mentioned before, for EWD's cultural activities and cultural affairs is Transit Occupancy Tax, TOT tax. And prior to the pandemic, there were a number of hotels underway. Many of, I think many or all of those hotels have finished construction now, and that's pretty exciting. This has been an area of need in Oakland for a long time. So I think a bright spot over the past few years has been these three hotels, the sort of the hotel development activity that's come to Oakland, which is both activating these different areas, 14th and Jefferson, 24th and Broadway, and 22nd and Telegraph with these three hotels, and generating sort of significant economic activity, bringing people back to Oakland to shop and eat and dine in our restaurants and our retail corridors and generating that TOT tax revenue for the city to fund a lot of our critical activities. Next slide. So all of this data is available online at our Quarterly Economic Dashboard. Economic and Workforce Development staff publish this data quarterly. It's both a sort of a flat PDF that you can download and look at. There's also an interactive dashboard. You can click around and look at some of the indicators. EWD doesn't generate any of this data. We're data aggregators, so a lot of this information comes from other sources. It comes from our Department of Finance, revenue data, and our data partners. But in case you're interested, if you're ever looking for snapshots of Oakland's economic data around unemployment or any of the other data points I share, you can visit this URL right here. And that site is updated quarterly. Next slide. So now I'm going to just give a little bit more of a deep dive on each of our six department divisions. And I want to speak a little bit too about our department's priorities as I go into them. So one of our top priorities, which you saw in our departmental briefing, which I spoke a little about before, is to release a five-year economic development strategy. So the city actually has had an adopted economic development strategy that was adopted in 2017 for the years from 2018 to 2020. And that really set, tried to chart a path around, you know, how do we support minority and small businesses and create workforce development programs to really advance equitable development and equitable economic development in Oakland? That strategy ended in 2020, right around the time that this COVID-19 pandemic started and the economic shutdowns were taking place. So the Department of Economic and Workforce Development really focused the last two years during the COVID-19 pandemic on emergency business response, on, you know, how do we address the immediate needs of our businesses and our workers to ensure that they have access to the resources they need, that they can get grant money and the federal and state and local subsidies and benefits and programs that they need to survive through the pandemic and hopefully start, you know, start to grow and thrive again as things begin to reopen. During that period, we released a couple of documents which are listed in the departmental briefing and that you can access online, specifically an economic recovery plan that was released in 2021 and the recommendations of our Economic Recovery Advisory Council. So that was our activity over the last few years. The team is focused now on taking the learnings from the COVID-19 pandemic and applying those to update and create a new five-year economic development strategy that's targeted to be released later this year. So that's one of our top priorities. In addition to that, another one of our top priorities is advancing business and cannabis equity support programs. So really, you know, something we learned during the pandemic is just the tremendous need of Oakland's small business community to have targeted support programs that can help them either open a new business, expand their existing business, or just stay in business and continue to grow and provide jobs and generate revenue for the city. So that's one of the core focuses of our business development team, which is discussed here. So in addition to these sort of high-level business attraction retention that I talked about, the Business Development Team administers 11 Community Benefit and Business Improvement Districts, which you'll hear referred to as BIDS. And there's actually a lot of work being done through the Business Development Team now, backed by some direction and funding from council. And thank you to the council members that have led that charge to really support some new commercial corridors and commercial districts, specifically in underserved communities in places like East Oakland, Little Saigon, to help them get their access to the resources they need to form their own merchant organizations and form new bids. We also, during the pandemic, launched a new program called the Neighborhood Business Assistance Program. There's a link here where businesses can go online and schedule appointments. And we have business development staff that go out to city libraries all around Oakland in various Oakland communities so they can meet small business owners where they're at, because we heard that it's a hardship for business owners to travel downtown to City Hall in many cases to request business assistance or fill out forms or get help with accessing resources. Another sort of flagship program that was recently launched is actually open right now is the Facade and Tenant Improvement Program. You can see the flyer here on the right side of the slide. And that's actually an expanded and improved program that was in place previously, again, with additional funding from council, so thank you. And it's been revamped to remove some of the equity barriers that were making it challenging for some of our small BIPOC and women-owned businesses to access funds. So that program is open now. It's accepting applications through January 31st. And I encourage, if you haven't already sort of publicized or shared the flyer with businesses in your district, please don't hesitate to reach out or call the number or go to the website on the flyer, and we can help you either set up a workshop to share information with businesses in your district or get you some materials to share out. And then finally, another area that business development is focused on is just in addition to general technical assistance, they are partnering with the Department of Workplace and Employment Standards to launch a local contractor training program with some federal grant funding, really to support, to create, start to create a pipeline into, you know, high-value city contracts and local contracts for some of our local Black and minority contractors. Next slide. So Workforce Development, I mentioned, is another really critical part of what Economic and Workforce Development does, and this aligns with our third departmental priority for the year, which is to expand workforce opportunities to support Oakland's economic recovery. So I already talked about WIOA funding. It's a significant source of workforce investment for the city, about $4 million annually, and this team oversees those funds. They also staff the Oakland Workforce Development Board, which has responsibility for overseeing employment and training programs in Oakland and sort of making decisions and administrative decisions about how workforce dollars are spent in Oakland. And then in addition to that, the Workforce Development Team coordinates and supports citywide job training initiatives. So the Mayor's Youth Summer Job Program, that you may have heard about. And then recently, something very exciting is the new state-funded Oakland Forward Youth Workforce Program, where the City of Oakland received almost $6 million from the state to create an entirely new three-year job training program for young people in Oakland. Next slide, please. And I'm going to turn the, there we go. Got to turn the light back on in my office. I sat still for too long. Okay, the third division we're going to talk about is the Cultural Affairs Division. And again, this aligns with our fourth departmental priority, which is expand the city's support for special events, cultural arts, and festivals. So when we talk about the economy in Oakland, we can't talk about economic development in Oakland without recognizing the incredible importance of our cultural community. They're both a key economic sector of our economy, creating jobs and contributing revenue to Oakland's economy. I think they're also an essential part of what makes Oakland sort of such a unique and attractive place for people to come and live and work. So the Cultural Affairs Department has a really pivotal role in the city. It's mentioned in the departmental briefing that recently the Cultural Affairs Department issued Belonging in Oakland, which was the city's first-ever cultural plan. I encourage you, if you haven't looked at it, take a look at it. It's a really powerful document that establishes the framework to build more community cohesion, provide more cultural funding for Oakland's community of color, communities of color, and celebrate Oakland's diversity. So really, the role of the Cultural Affairs Team is to implement that cultural plan in several different ways, which I touched on previously. In addition to managing the cultural funding grant program, which is an allocation of funds, it's a combination of general fund and transit occupancy tax funding. They oversee the public art program, both in private development and capital improvement projects. The Cultural Affairs Division, it's a small division, just about five people, but it staffs a number of commissions and committees, including the Cultural Affairs Commission, the Public Art Advisory Committee, and the Funding Advisory Committee. And then most recently, excitingly, last year, the Cultural Affairs Division launched the Cultural Strategist Program and the Creative Economies of Belonging Program, which is a grant-funded program that awards grants of up to $20,000 to Oakland-based nonprofits to create jobs for artists and teaching artists in Oakland. And there's actually an item coming to Life Enrichment Committee later this month for approval of the first round of grants associated with that program. So keep an eye out for that. Next slide. So I mentioned, you know, sort of the recent addition to Economic and Workforce Development, but a very critical addition is the Special Activity Permits Division. So this team regulates cannabis businesses in addition to a number of other businesses that fall in the category of special activities, such as cabarets, mobile food vendors, and then recently, special events and film production. This is a very exciting sort of leading-edge field for the City of Oakland. Oakland was the first jurisdiction in the country to launch a cannabis equity program, working very closely with our Department of Race and Equity and Director Darlene Flynn. And this is a program specifically focused on creating a sort of an economic structure, a programmatic structure that supports those most impacted by the war on drugs and creates economic opportunities from an equitable lens for those individuals. So it's really exciting. It's kind of become a model for the rest of the country since Oakland launched this program in 2017. And then even more recently, in 2022, Oakland launched the first Equity Week celebration, which was last November, which is really just to celebrate our cannabis equity operators and businesses and Visit Oakland, our partner in our sort of tourism partner, launched the first-ever Cannabis Trail, which I put a link there. It's actually pretty cool if you check it out. It shows you how you can visit different cannabis businesses in Oakland with a focus on equity businesses. So it's really an exciting field, a place where Oakland is really continuing to be at the forefront and to be a leader in this new area of economic development and has really shown the success of applying a very intentional equity framework to that idea of economic development. Next slide. So we're almost at the end, and this is a good segue to handing it off to my colleague Bill Gilchrist to talk about land use and planning and building. But I mentioned before, an important part of economic development is public-private development and real estate. So our fifth priority that you'll see in our departmental briefing is to leverage public land to advance affordable housing development, homeless intervention programs, and other major real estate projects that sort of, that advance the city's goals around economic and cultural security. So we'll get into this in more detail in our land use description, but as I said, this is an area. The Public-Private Development Team, the former Redevelopment Agency, actively negotiates real estate development on public city-owned land and former redevelopment land. So at any given moment, there's a lot of deals in the pipeline in different stages of development and pre-development. Currently, there are seven sites with active development agreements and three that are going to be coming to council later this year for approvals of exclusive negotiation agreement. We'll talk about that more at the end of the land use discussion. There's a number of sites that were declared as surplus land by the city council over the past few years, and this team is actively in the process of issuing those sites for development. And it's important to note that we work really closely in partnership with our colleagues in the Housing and Community Development Department and the Human Services Department to ensure that the way that this public land is being offered, both for interim use, it could be interim use around emergency homeless programs, interventions like safe RV sites or community cabins, or permanent long-term development. We work closely with those colleagues interdepartmentally to ensure that the way the land is being offered and put to use is consistent with the city's goals and strategies around providing homeless services and meeting our affordable housing goals. Just a picture over to the side is of the new Samuel Merritt University campus at City Center. This is a really cool, exciting project breaking ground this year. It's a local nursing college, Samuel Merritt University, with more than 100-year history in Oakland. It's tremendous provider of jobs, primarily high-paying jobs for women and people of color. That's the majority of their student body. And this is going to be a really terrific activation for the City Center site on what's currently vacant land. It's going to bring a lot of new students, faculty to City Center, and all those students and faculty will be shopping at restaurants and just activating the downtown City Center area, which will be really positive for economic development downtown. Couple of other things Public-Private Development does in addition to development, they manage the Oakland Renaissance New Market Tax Credits Program, which is a funding source for new development. And as I mentioned before, they're winding down the Oakland Redevelopment Successor Agency. Next slide. So final slide is the Real Estate Team. So as we mentioned before, the Real Estate Team handles leasing asset management, all real estate activities for all city-owned land. The city, there's a city-owned real estate portfolio of over 1,100 owned properties, about 170 leases. It's important to note that of those 1,100 properties, the majority of them are very small sliver parcels or sort of small pieces of land. There's actually probably fewer than 20 that have high development potential, and a lot of those are discussed in the surplus land discussion. And then, as I mentioned before, the Real Estate Team really, you know, they manage complex real estate transactions, really working closely with Human Services and Housing and Community Development to look at what's the best use to put public land to both in an interim and a permanent basis. And this could be homeless intervention programs, but also other community-serving programs. The photo here shows a site out in District 7 on MacArthur Boulevard that was recently leased to Homies Empowerment for use as a Freedom Farm. They're calling it a Freedom Farm. It's like a community garden and distribution site for goods for the community. So a lot of great work happening in the Real Estate Team around land use and land use policy. So I'll stop there. I think that brings us to the end, right, Latonya? And to learn more, you can visit our website at business2oakland.com, and I will hand it over to Bill to talk about planning and building. Thank you.
Just a quick point of process here.
Sure.
I believe that we had talked about having some time for discussion before we go into the next section.
Okay.
So if my council colleagues are able to hold their questions, we can do the discussion towards the end of the presentation. That might help us save time since we started late. But I do want to see if anyone has any burning questions. Okay, I don't see any hands up, so let's keep going with the presentation. Director Gilchrist.
Right. Thank you, President, and very happy to be here this afternoon. May it please the council. This is a great opportunity, excuse me, for us to present as department heads, but also for us to learn from each other on the content that we're bringing forward. And I want to also express my appreciation to the administration for helping all of us pull this together. I'll be talking this afternoon about the Planning and Building Department. And again, while giving a broad overview, we'll get into a little bit of detail around some of the responsibilities that we do have. And before we get into this list, I also just wanted to go through a statement of mission for our department as well. So the mission of the City of Oakland Planning and Building Department is to improve the social, economic, and physical environments of Oakland through sustainable development that embraces three core principles: equity, health, and economic opportunity. So through our designated responsibilities and authority, we focus on the following areas. We look to engage the community to create a vision for development. We feel very strongly We feel very strongly that the community has to be the principal architect of the environment in which they live and are working more and more towards enhancing our capacity to engage community proactively in that role. We look to establish and enforce codes and ordinances for development. So as an outcome of that vision and that determination of what the community would like to be, how it would like to look, we have guidance through codes and ordinances to ensure that that vision is actually realized. We look to address disparities in development and enforcement. As has been mentioned in some of the earlier presentations today, it's been a constant theme, certainly for many, many decades in the city of Oakland in terms of achieving justice, is that we have a legacy, as most cities do, of great disparities in some cases that were built around actual zoning provisions that had race-based clauses in them. I'm coming out of the South, out of New Orleans and Birmingham, that historically actually had zoning provisions that designated where different races could be. But even in cities that did not have that explicit separation or segregation, there were other means and methods of redlining and loan awarding and different means of segregation that were applied as well. And we're dealing with the legacy of how we improve communities and address the disparities through the work that we do. The first thing we want to do is to do no harm, but then we also want to find ways to undo harm that has preceded us through decisions in the past that were unjust. We also are a transactional department. In addition to the strategic discussion we just had on the earlier points, we are an amount of speaking of retail department where people come in for services, for applications and permits. So we have that outward-looking face in terms of real-time interaction with a customer base, which is in addition to our strategic role that we look longer term around planning. We also manage the Sequel Process. California is one of a few states in the nation that actually has a very high threshold for environmental review of any proposed plan or project. So as we'll be discussing through this presentation and as the council will be seeing come before it over the next few weeks, our general plan update, we always take the planning exercises, our zoning review, individual projects, to see how they measure against Sequel, what level of review is required, and if so, at what level do we need to do an environmental impact review. And then we process applications to coordinate projects with other departments and agencies. As has been alluded earlier today, we're in very close partnership with our good colleagues in housing and community development, as is referenced in this presentation with our friends in economic and workforce development. But we also have an ongoing and lateral relationship with other departments in the city, with Public Works, with the Fire Department, both through permitting and review of applications as well as actual capital programs and projects. And then we also, and with DOT, but we also work with organizations outside of the city, with BART, with the Port, with Alameda County. And in the case of the Port, while they are also subject to align their development with the general plan requirements, they do their own land use regulation, so they are outside of our zoning authority, although they do come before us for building permits. So we have sort of an ongoing conversation, negotiation, discussion with other agencies as they relate to our work. We rely on Alameda County for anything that is health-related in terms of discoveries you may have through our own enforcement. If there's a health situation that's uncovered, Alameda County is our partner organization, jurisdiction in order to engage enforcement around those issues as well. Next. So our delegation of authority within department is principally cited within the municipal code entitled seventeen for planning and title fifteen for building. So that's good direction for the council members, for the council members in particular, and for your staff as well, that if you have any questions about how we, in fact, may be applying the code, if you hear a question from a constituent or that is generated out of your own office around how the building code is being interpreted or applied, title fifteen will be where you would find that delegation of authority for the city, which our department is assigned agency to enforce. And similarly, for planning, title seventeen is the section where the municipal codes related to zoning and land use occur. So if you ever need to find reference again for how the department is interpreting or applying enforcement around those titles, or you'd like to introduce new regulations that relate to land use or to building, those would be the titles that you would want to research. Next. And the departmental organization, we have three bureaus. And at the frontline, frontline in terms of public interface, we have, again, the Building Bureau, and that is head by a deputy director, Chris Ragland, who is actually our new chief building official, has been with us for a little over three months now. And he oversees the title fifteen enforcement for the municipal code within the department. I'm very glad to have him on board. He's been making some great headway in organizing the bureau and also has a very strong commitment towards equity and towards community engagement as part of the building process, which is not something that you often find with your chief building official, but it's been something that he has actually brought to the discussion. We're very welcome and happy to have him. And deputy director of the Planning Bureau, Ed Manassi. Many of you who are tenured council members already know, Ed, have had opportunity to interface with him. He is sort of an institution here at City of Oakland and has just an encyclopedic understanding of our land use laws and processes. And he has been the deputy director for, I believe, almost four years. He's been doing a great job in working with staff in helping us advance major projects and initiatives like the general plan update. And then we have the assistant director over administration and operations. And we're joined by Monica Davis, who also is a recent hire, has been here shortly over three months, is making tremendous contribution already with her time here. And this was a position that was actually created after I arrived to help improve the interaction that we had within the department administratively, but also with the outside departments, with council, with the city administration office, and with other agencies. I feel very, very fortunate that we've had a great successive tenure of occupants of that position. Preceding Monica was our own Angela Robinson Peñón, and prior to her, Katie Dignan. For those of you who remember her tenure, each of whom have really done a tremendous job by helping us to organize the department through this bureau. Next. So I'm going to get into a little bit more detail with the responsibilities that each bureau brings. Again, for the planning, the primary laws, codes, and policies around land use, the general plan and its update, any zoning application reviews, anyone who comes in with a building application. One of the first things we have to make sure of is whether or not the way they plan to use the site is in accordance with the way the site has been zoned. Then our specific and area plans, where we do update, where these are actually the implementation approach towards a general plan recommendation. So we'll get into this in a little bit more detail. Some of you have been involved in the specific plan updates in West Oakland and downtown, which we're in the process of doing right now. And then we also work with neighborhoods around their plans that are at finer grain and finer scale. But every square inch of the city needs its attention in terms of its vision and how it develops. And again, through this kind of engagement, it's all interactive. What the plans recommend is what the zoning then applies. Next. So the organization of the Planning Bureau, there are three focuses. Again, strategic planning, which really deals with the longer-range vision. At the highest level, the general plan. And then the specific plans, which become the more place-based focus of the general plan. So we actually get a better sense of location, character, and extent of what developments will occur within the specific plan area, where we deal with our inter-agency planning with BART, with AC Transit, with the Port, with any other agency that we may be engaged with around planning policy. Our research and analysis, where we need to do data analytics to affirm a direction that we may want to propose going around planning that has land use implications. This is also the division that typically helps us pursue planning grants, where we look for grants at the state or federal level. And again, this is the group that is the author of any text changes we bring to the title seventeen in the municipal code. Then we have the zoning section, which receives the plans that are submitted by applicants, makes a determination around their conformity. Sometimes there is a gray zone of interpretation as to whether something fits the definition or does not, and that's why we have to have a determination made by the zoning manager. And these can often be appealed or are appealable to the planning commission. So if someone takes issue with a determination, they have an opportunity to place that appeal. And then on permit processing, assuming that the determination allows the project to move forward as it's been submitted and conflicted, the application is on. And then with development planning, where we have major projects. We had, as an example, a planning commission yesterday, the case of the Brooklyn Basin coming before it, that we have projects that have to come before planning commission. Looks like, okay, good. Projects that have to come before planning commission for their entitlement review or for review for conformity with the specific plan. And those cases are submitted through the staff, which serves as staff to the planning commission. We work with the developer, make sure that the components of the project align for what needs to happen around its development, around any sort of community benefits, around any sort of interactive relationship it may have with other development that's close by. If there's any landmarks, historic assets involved in the location or extent of the project, we have the landmarks board that will bring the project before and receive advisory determination. At this point, we also make a decision whether or not the project is going to require SEQUA or EIR review. And then we also have the opportunity to enter into development agreements, which is something that the planning commission will negotiate with an applicant, but ultimately will come before you, before the council, the whole, for review and approval. And what the DA's allow the City of Oakland to do, and this is something that Oakland, I think, has used quite well, and not every city has this approach, where you're able to negotiate, in addition to what the conditions of improvement may require on a given project, you're able to get something extra. So the case I mentioned yesterday on the Brooklyn Basin, working its way toward you, towards council, there'll be a DA associated with that to look at getting additional affordable housing in that project, which came to the negotiations with planning commission and staff. So that is something above and beyond what the zoning itself would require. But in terms of development opportunities that the developer would like to pursue, this is something we can engage in negotiation and achieve. Next. So the general plan, we'll be hearing a whole lot more about that. And we actually have been having ongoing conversations now for more than a year, a year and a half, with council and with your staffer on the general plan. We are on cycle for its update. We'll talk about that in a little bit more detail in a moment. But again, it is the long-range planning document. It is essentially the roadmap, so to speak, of how we'd like to see the city develop. There was a comment earlier today, I believe during Housing and Community Development discussion, I think Councilmember Guy, you might have raised it, around the vision, around how we see the city years from now. What is it going to be? And from the land use perspective, that is a question that has to be answered at many different levels. But from a land use perspective, the general plan is our blueprint towards making that statement. Based on what it is, we can project right now, our best sense today of what we think the city could be, should be, and what the community wants it to be, we then get our land use designations aligned so we can support that outcome. So again, these are policies and maps that provide the general framework. We don't get down to the parcel-by-parcel discussion. That is where we use a specific plan as an instrument to get us towards that end. But this is really, again, the baseline of alignment and conformity that our development has to pursue, including that of the Port. So again, as I mentioned earlier, even though they're outside our land use jurisdiction, they have to also comport with what the general plan implies or states explicitly. Thank you. Next. So under the adoption of the general plan, we want to ensure that we are following certain policies. And again, we'll be getting into this in more detail, certainly as we bring the housing element before you, but along with the other seven elements that are involved. So we have as our policy to ensure that community development is just and fair. This again gets back to redressing what has been inappropriately done historically in cities around equity. But also making sure as we move forward that we are correcting those and enhancing a more equitable and fair outcome. Now, we encourage high-quality and high-density mixed-use growth along commercial corridors. Again, that's transit-oriented development, taking advantage of the fact that there's a transit investment has direct implications on being able to get great opportunity for servicing communities, for retail, for workplace, for any kind of connection between residential and commercial or industrial uses that there are opportunities to leverage transit around those mixed uses. To preserve and enhance existing residential neighborhoods, to appreciate the fact that a neighborhood has already established a certain character and that in terms of making it more accessible for community, that we also want to build on what is best. We want to create new beauty and new opportunity in communities, but we also want to be deferential about what the community would like us to conserve there. We want to develop the waterfront for public use, a tremendous asset that Oakland has that many cities do not. But in many ways, the waterfront feels separate and a little bit distant for much of the city. So one of the goals we have is to find better ways to open up and connect and to even use the waterfront as a means of getting from one part of the city to the other. To preserve industrial land, to provide jobs for Oakland residents, my good colleague mentioned that in her presentation a moment ago. And to create a vibrant downtown for Oaklanders, for all the richness we have. It's a tapestry, really, of communities across Oakland that have their own commercial cores and centers, which we want to enhance and sustain. We do want to make it clear that downtown is everyone's neighborhood, everyone's community, and we want to make sure, particularly as we bring this downtown specific plan forward, that it is reflective of the values that constitute Oakland. Next. So we are engaged and updates. I'm not going to get in exhaustive detail here because we'll have opportunities in real time to go through this with the council as we bring the resolutions forward and ordinances forward for the adoption of the various elements. The first one being the housing element that's coming up and where we do have a statutory deadline imposed by the state for January 31st of this year. And again, California is one of a few states that actually takes interest at the state level in ensuring that local jurisdictions keep their plans current. Many states in the nation do not do this, but we have a very strong partnership and incentive coming from Oakland, coming from Sacramento to Oakland for us to keep our plans current. And phase one of the 2045 general plan update process will also include a safety element and the creations, the first time this will occur, of an environmental justice element. And I want to be clear that even though we will have the environmental justice element containing specific recommendations and requirements around environmental justice, as a theme, it will be existing across all elements that we adopt. Because this is not something just to be compartmentalized. It really has to live in the document as a whole. But we also want to lift it up in terms of its importance, that it has its own element with this adoption. Next. And then phase two, after we are completed with phase one, we'll be starting later this year to look at other elements that are to be adopted and enforced. The land use and transportation element, which we use as a loop. We call these by acronyms. Sometimes they're very wordy in planery, so we like to get some abbreviations going. And with the open space conservation and recreation element, the OSCER. And then we'll also have a noise element. So one of the things that I want to make sure that we stress and we're aware of is that even though we have a phase, our phase-one adoption that includes the housing element and other elements of the general plan, that the land use and transportation element in particular is going to be a very powerful instrument we have well into the next several years to look at in terms of adjusting or fine-tuning or enhancing what we will have already adopted through phase one. And the open space conservation and recreation, the OSCER element, open space and public space is absolutely critical for community sustainability. So that is also going to be a very important element for us to pursue. So we're also looking at the creation of the city's first infrastructure and capital facilities element to include policies for infrastructure and capital improvements and really building on the great work that OPW has done with the Office of Race and Equity and OakDOT in terms of the capital program and making sure, again, that equity is a critical consideration in putting the capital program together. And then we'll also, as a outcome of the phase one and phase two, update the zoning code. And that will include, particularly with phase one, some very robust updates around housing, including obviating the need for parking for affordable housing, that we want to make affordable housing as easy to deliver as possible and to also cut down on the number of discretionary reviews that are required for developments, that we want to make as much ministerial and administrative as possible, that we can look at plans as they come in without having to take them through arduous steps that go in before planning commission or coming before council if there's no real value to be added by that process. Next. So on the specific plans, and we'll be getting into some of this with the subsequent presentation with Alexa. So I'm not going to get into great, great detail, but just as an example, on the S2R plan here, you can see that we get into much more detail around the character and extent of each of these segments within the plan. This is all place based, we want to be very respectful of the character that we find when we bring these specific plans on board. And really leverage the best opportunities we can out of them. So we have to be somewhat nuanced as we move through this exercise. This is never a one size fits all from specific plan to specific plan. But even within a plan, we want to recognize the richness that each community can offer and how we can best build upon that. Next. And again, you can see a broader portfolio of specific area plans that. We have undertaken recently and the downtown which we're currently adopting and the process of adopting. Next. So we have these completed, the map showed a moment ago, a central estuary, West Oakland. Lake Merritt, Broadway Valdez, International Boulevard and the Colosseum specific plan. Next. So just as a quick example at a larger scale, you can see the Lake Merritt Chinatown specific plan. Which provides a great example of the breadth of condition that we can find within any one planned area. We certainly. Have got a core neighborhood, one of the oldest and most venerated neighborhoods in the city and the in the area and the state. And in looking at how this community can benefit from a specific plan update. We recognize that the mixed nature of retail, residents, cultural venues. And also that we're next to some of the natural features that also bring beauty and recreation to Oakland. The the estuary, the Lake Merritt, that there is a natural nexus. With the built environment as well, that you you don't have to go very far, you can walk a few blocks from your front door. To really commune with a wonderful natural exposure. So again, we want to make sure that we leverage these kinds of assets when we look at our specific plan updates. Forward. And again, just some images that show you the range of character within any one of these specific plans. And again, this is the richness of Oakland. There were like a series of villages, like a tapestry where you have a range of different uses within any community. And again, we want to respect and enhance those as we plan. Next. So again, we'll be getting into specifics around projects, but you can see coming out of. The specific plan and its recommendations, then we engage developers and the city often or other public agencies, the Housing Authority. BART, other groups that do development to see how they can bring projects online that fulfill the goals and objectives of a specific plan. Next. And it's not just about the buildings again, the the public space, the the open area that connects, that both separates and connects. The character of those is also important to really establishing the flavor and the the sense of place that we want our communities to enjoy. So even as we bring new construction onboard, we want to make sure that it doesn't turn its back to the street or to the community, that it's welcoming. That where we have space between buildings in particular, that we strive to program them with retail on grade or different uses on the ground. That also allow the place to be enlivened. And that the places have character that even if it's just a few people in them, it feels comfortable. That nothing is too windswept or too broad or too too large in terms of being inappropriate for the scale of just feeling good being there. Next. And I wanted to go through the, again, the land use decision making process. I alluded to some of this earlier, so I'm not going to. Lingo on this slide very long. But just wanted to make sure that the council is aware. That as we go through these reviews on zoning on different parcels. That we have a category that again, we can do at the administrative level within the department. But then again, depending on the size and type of the land use project, it may have to go before the planning commission. And in which case it may also have to come before council. And one thing the council should be aware of in its relationship with planning commission, we're going to talk a little bit more about this. Is that you are also the body of appeal for planning commission decisions where the decision originates with planning commission. The commission is the body of appeal for any decision we make in the department. But if it's a decision the planning commission has made as the first body of hearing or decision. Then you as the council are the body of appeal for their for their rules. Next. And with environmental protection, again, mentioned CEQA at the beginning of the presentation. That we also make a decision around whether or not there's an exclusion. What level of review is required to conform with the California Environmental Quality Act, that's within our department's responsibility. And also other aspects of the city laws that help to conserve the environment. Creek protection, water quality, we work very closely with OPW. In that regard, tree protection with them again as well. And green building with OPW and the whole sustainability initiative that they have undertaken for the past several years. Next. And again, this gets into more detail. We are certainly happy to send more information on CEQA. To the council, again, just being mindful of time, don't want to get into too much on the weeds. But again, primarily, we make a determination whether a project falls. Under a statutory category exemption from CEQA, first decision is to make whether or not we have to bring it through the review or not. And if it's not exempt, then we oversee the preparation of whatever the appropriate decision may be. And they're cited there, the negative declaration, a mitigated negative declaration, or whether we have to take the project to an environmental impact review. Next. And this is just, I'm not spending much time on this one at all, this just gives you an example. Of what we use as a tool. For looking at the different types of permits that are allowed under our different zoning categories. So again, we can unpack all of this for whoever is that is very much interested or that interested. But this is again, what most developers or architects. Contractors often will look at to make sure that what they're proposing on a given designation of a land use map is something the city is likely to approve. Next. So we also have a historic preservation and landmarks advisory board. And given the richness of Oakland's history and so much of it being exhibited through to the built form, through the buildings or open spaces we have. We recognize as a city that is growing and changing. That there's a balance that we always have to strike between what it is we want to conserve and keep. As an recognition of that history that is the city. And also what we would like to celebrate that might not be. Manifested in buildings or construction, but still we want to celebrate in terms of other kinds of expressions such as historic landmarks. So we work very closely with initiatives that designate districts, that celebrate events. That really help program the exterior space of the city. So that we know that there was something significant that happened and that generations to come. Can be edified by that history through the way we have captured it. And this is also an area in which we work very closely with our friends in economic workforce development around arts initiatives. And also with other agencies that oversee public spaces such as the parks, to see where we can install these. And one thing that I would really want to stress too for consideration. In looking at the Black Panthers district that we are contemplating moving forward with, we've had opportunities to work. With the Huey P. Newton Foundation as a principal stakeholder and agent in that capacity. That these kinds of engagements and investments by cities have tremendous benefit for communities in terms of both stabilizing them. Where you have these kind of investments, there is a reinvigoration in the community. But also for bringing and attracting economic development as cultural tourism is also a very, very important aspect of cities economies. So Oakland has a great opportunity, both through its history of architecture and built form. And also through its thematic history of the events here that really helped shape the nation to be able to advance this kind of showcase. Next. Then we do design review, our Alexa alluded earlier to the facade improvement programs. And one of the things that we really like to do is to see what are the simplest ways to make a whole lot of enhancement. To really improve the way a building may look with the least amount of intervention. Because we we have to be realistic also about the economic impacts of someone who's trying to develop a project. But we do want to create quality environments. So we have a designer view committee of the planning commission. And we're also in the process of developing objective standards, which will allow us to take projects through this process more quickly. But you can see that before and after, that there's not a substantive change in terms of the overall massing orientation of the building. But just with a few facade changes, we can really make a much different statement. In terms of of the outward face of a building or a project. Next. So again, just to be very clear on the roles that we have, I think one of the most. Ongoing interactions that council, city council will have will be with planning commission and in terms of the cases that come before council. From planning commission, our staff will be supporting you in that regard, as well as supporting planning commission. And their original hearing of the case as it's brought before them. I won't go through all of this, I think I've referenced it before in the slides. But you can see that there is a relationship between the planning bureau staff up to the commission and the commission to the council. The council also has authority under Title seventeen to charge the planning commission to review any change. To the text or map within the zoning ordinance. And you also have the confirmation for the mayor nominees to the planning commission. So you have an active connection with the planning commission as well, not just receiving cases from them. But also being able to refer cases to them to review for resolutional ordinance and also in confirming the appointees to that body. Next. And with the building bureau, we're in the home stretch, the more transactional aspect again of the department is really executed by the building bureau. Both in terms of the plan processing of applications when someone comes in to submit. For review of their work to make sure it's conforming with the building codes. Also for ongoing inspection of work as it's being built to make sure that it conforms. With what was approved or if there were some necessary changes that they're also conforming to code requirements. And then also for enforcement of existing buildings that may be engaged in some type of violation. And we also send inspectors, we have two categories of inspection assignments. One that look at new construction, others that do code enforcement, although we can through the job description use those categories interchangeably. Next. And with the building bureau organization, again, just quick summary, we have the engineering plan check. Which again receives the review and they also typically do the authorship for any changes to the building code that we bring before council. And then the inspections that again, look at new construction and code enforcement. Next. So with the building bureau operations, again, our goals for them specifically is are becoming fully staff. And preparing for the staff who will be retiring over the following years. We're going through a bit of the gray tsunami, which is affecting most governments across the nation right now, most local governments, just with the retirement. Of staff, but we have, as you all know, just a sincere need for staffing up all bureaus. And wanting to make sure particularly with our transactional divisions. That we are focusing on staffing and doing our forecasting in terms of when people will be retiring. Refining coordination with the fellow divisions, department divisions. And make sure that we're using technology, our cellar system, our other systems for technical interaction, cumatic. Other software to make sure that we're managing well between the bureaus, the divisions and with the general public. And also looking to where the implementation of a proactive rental inspection program this coming year. To look at the safety and condition of of rental units across the city. And also with the joint live work. To ensure that structures are safe to occupy. And I want to thank council for helping us achieve a major milestone in that regard. At the end of last year with the adoption of the new building code that had provisions for us to work toward that end. That were really unprecedented in terms of our ability to work with joint live work quarters. Property owners and bringing them into compliance while not engendering any kind of displacement. So thank you again, council for your great work and supporting us there. Next. And code enforcement, which is an ongoing concern across the city. That again, under the chapter of the OMC that we have for maintenance, for building maintenance, maintenance, this is one of the areas that we enforce. And again, won't go through this in great detail, this is one of these things where one tends to know blight when one sees it. But there is specific reference to activities that lead to blight and the condition of blight that gives us to trigger them to move forward with enforcement. Next. And building maintenance also in terms of anyone adapting a building that is outside what was approved, that that is something else we'll go and enforce. Code enforcement initially and then depending on whether or not it is a change that can be brought into compliance. Will then work with them through plan review and then through building inspections. But again, we want to make sure that they're in compliance with the code and chapters and not just going and doing things, even. Building penthouses that have not been approved or reviewed by the city. Next. And then zoning, sometimes it's not about the bricks and mortar that have been. Either inappropriately extended or altered or about the physical condition of the building itself. But it's also that somebody's doing something there for which they're not properly zoned. So we also have our inspectors and they enforce a part of Title seventeen in that regard. And I'm sure again, all of us could cite properties within each of the districts. Where we have this kind of situation that somebody is doing something on their property for which they do not have legal sanction. Next. And graffiti, again, which is one of the great challenges we have across the city and some of it very expressive, very artistically rendered. But again, we need to in enforcing. The maintenance provisions of the code, look at graffiti in its place, see how it can be addressed. And particularly where it is visible, whenever it's visible from the street, from other public or private property, that it is remedied. And we have a group within the code enforcement that focuses specifically on that. Next. And then in administration as an operation, the permit application intake, our collection of fees. Our IT support, budget management, personnel management. This is the bureau that is led by Assistant Director Monica Davis. And its principal responsibilities are laid there. Next. And it is organized where they actually manage the permit counter. They also have administrative responsibility for our internal operations. And then for our digital services, we are a very heavy user of digital processes, particularly with the onset of the pandemic, we migrated. Into a virtual submittal process which we never had before, it was totally new. It's also been one of the challenges that we've been having to meet in terms of staff. Allocation between real time interaction with applicants and processing applications as they come in. And and one that we are addressing. But it has been a wonderful boon, just in terms of the data access for submittals, we were able to get submittals. All times a day. I know one of the issues that we had previously around staffing. Was whether or not we were available for applicants after their work hours. But we have a huge submittal after the fact of closure, so you have to be close to the office. For business that we also keep our. Our portal open for receiving applications so people are still able to submit, even if they were not able to come down to the. Permit counter during our regular hours. Next. But we do have hours where people can come down for permitting, both for walk-ins and by appointment. And we obviously will be looking at that and revisiting it as we move out of the different levels of emergency declaration. Pursuing to COVID. But we're very excited at the opportunity to look at how we balance our digital services, again, with having real time. Interaction or interface with customers as they come in. So again, we've talked about the online permitting already. We are engaged as with our other development and permit review department. Fire, Public Works, DOT, with the reimagining one stop permitting. Which we've had some great insights in terms of how we can improve our operations, but also have some more work we'll be taking on. From the public's perspective, we are a one stop organization, we may have different departments. But that doesn't really matter much for someone who's coming in trying to get a permit. You know, for her home or for an office complex or for a major industrial investment. They see this as one seamless operation and we're working. Towards making that the reality through this reimagining one stop permitting initiative. And again, thanks to the CEO's office for their leadership in this regard. Next. So there we are, if you have any questions, we can open it up.